I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we, um, we present our, our own hearts to you and just ask for you to touch them, affect them, guide them, um, and then as a group, as we make decisions that affect our whole county, we ask for your guidance in that, your name, amen.
Thank you.
Sheriff, all received minutes from the last meeting. Are there any adjustments, suggestions, corrections?
Motion to approve meeting minutes from the last, last month.
Second.
Fred and Bob, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thanks. Sheriff here.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here for the, which one are we gonna talk about first?
Nine one one emergency response system.
Yep, okay. Um, I spoke earlier, uh, have much more data, there's, uh, the sheriff you guys referenced, uh, the issue we're having on our nine one one system. Uh, we currently have seven full-time dispatchers, two administrative, uh, and up to four part-time people working in there right now. Uh, we work twelve-hour shifts, two-week rotations, and our pay is starting at eighteen nineteen an hour. Bluffton is going to fifteen full-time dispatchers with one admin. They work a rotation of different schedules. Uh, they have three councils, they want covered twenty-four-seven. Their starting pay is twenty dollars and sixty-seven cents, up to twenty-eight dollars. Jay County has ten full-time, three part-time, and two admin. And they do not cover two dispatchers all the time. Their late night hours, they only have one person in a chair, and their starting pay is eighteen sixty-three. Wabash County, sixteen full-time, three part-time. Um, they work a four-and-two rotating schedule, three shifts, uh, with at least two people in the chair at all times. Miami County, eleven full-time, ten part-time, which is, that's the most part-time out of anybody. They work two-week rotations, a variety of shift. LaGrange County is ten full-time, they work twelve-hour shifts like us. Huntington County, twelve full-time, three part-times, and they run a, a weird shift. Uh, they usually have three people on and they're ten E to two A, they only have two people on instead of three. Fulton County, ten full-time, two part-time, they work twelve-hour shifts and they only have two people working. Woodley County, twelve full-time, two part-time, they, uh, run four councils, they try to always have at least two people on, four-and-two rotation. Columbia City, this is the, this is the weird one. Woodley County and Columbia City, they have two dispatch. Woodley County handles the nine-one calls and all county calls in all outlying towns. Columbia City, Columbia, Columbia City handles all their own calls inside the city and dispatches their own fire department inside the city. Woodley County has twelve full-time, Columbia City has ten full-time.
They have two different buildings, you know?
They are, they are. Um, and the starting pay for, uh, Columbia City after their first year probation is twenty-eight dollars an hour, twenty-eight thirty-six an hour. So, how they're paying for that, that, that's out, that's a weird one. Uh, no one else is like that. And they, I can't see there'd be that busy in Columbia City, uh, with dispatching their own city calls and then their own fire calls. So, that one's a weird one to me. That was, that one took me by surprise. So, with the, the different counties and stuff, the average wage was twenty-one ninety-two an hour, eleven point seven full-time dispatchers is what the area, and one point four full-time. So, we are behind with eight. Um, and again, the, the biggest issue is, and I know this seems, because I struggled with this coming to you guys, is having three people on all the time. Are they always gonna be busy? No, they're not gonna be. It's just kinda like firemen. Nothing knocking firemen, but you, you pay them to be ready to answer calls when, when the big stuff happens. Um, but with two, with how we are set up now, anytime anybody is sick, takes vacation, I send a training, I'm paying somebody to come in overtime status or part-time if the part-time is available. And since I don't have set part-time guaranteed hours, I'm struggling keeping part-time people. Because sometimes they get twenty-eight hours in one week, the maximum, other times they might get ten hours in two weeks. So, that's why I struggle with keeping part-time. But if I have my night shift by adding these two more dispatcher, night shift, each squad will get another one. So, that puts three in the chair at all times. And if someone is sick, someone's on vacation or trading, I still have two. And that saves a lot of time of trying to find somebody. The burnout this last year with, uh, what we had with the medical leave with one of our employees, uh, for eight months, we were struggling, switching people's schedule, trying to get stuff covered, and they're burned out. They really are. And on a daily basis, if you by yourself, and you won't go in the bathroom for eight hours, because they would have a hard time going to the bathroom. Uh, there is a bathroom in our dispatch, they could leave the door open, they could talk on the radio while going to the bathroom if they have to, but they can't answer the phone. Uh, our nine-one-one rolls over to Jay County if they would happen to be in the bathroom and a nine-one-one call. If they don't answer, it rolls over, but then Jay County is still calling us to give us the call. And if they're in the bathroom, they still can't take the call. So, that's when it becomes an issue serving our public and safety issues is we have to have more people in that room to cover all those things so we don't have those issues.
Fred, you gonna say something? What do we have, what, full part-time again?
We have eight full, uh, we have eight full-time and two admin. Uh, and we have two in training right now because we hired, uh, recently. So, we are down and we will be down until those people get trained up, uh, probably end of February. I think everybody should be trained up, everything goes as well, they should be on their own, and we'll be back to our staffing levels that we currently have.
So, you said Columbia City and Woodley, they definitely have two different dispatches, but what, what else? All the others, are they?
Pretty much all of the single P-SAPS, yes. That is the majority. Even Bluffton was the last one. Bluffton used to run two different ones. Uh, the county kinda ran their own county calls, uh, but they now have, they have a single dispatch center. It's Bluffton.
Yeah, with two additional full-time, you'd obviously use less part-time pay. So, I imagine that would probably even out, just paying for extra benefits for the, the two.
We're, we're paying the extra benefits and I, I, I would think it would even out not just part-time, but the overtime being paid to our other full-time staff, yes. And the benefits is gonna be what's extra.
So, that would be basically the only increase we'd see on our end roughly from an inflame?
Yes, uh, because during the day, my two admin can help cover the day shifts. Um, and then these two new ones will be going to the night shift, so we have three on each squad at night. Um, and like I said, during the day, if there's absences, vacation, training, the admin people step in and they can still work the chairs.
You said the average minus Woodley and Columbia City was ten or eleven?
Eleven point seven.
Well, and then bringing it up to ten would be, still too short of the average, but it would be manageable?
Much more manageable, yes. I mean, would I love to do two more on the day shift too? Yes, but like I said, baby steps. Uh, this is a, a need at night. Two more on day shift would be a want, uh, if we're looking at that need and wanting. This is a need. This is something that I think could affect our public if this continues at the, at the stance that we're in. And right now, this has not been budgeted for twenty twenty-four either. So, this, if it's approved, we would have to do an additional into the payroll for the nine-one-one because this was, I didn't think about this back in last, last April.
And, and Marie, do you have the number, maybe you have it, the numbers for what would be, like, how much are you guys paying in overtime and part-time right now? As opposed to how much the two new people would cost? Because I do think there probably be, you might wanna transfer. Do we know that or not?
Um, our overtime budget and part-time budget for next year in dispatch is roughly one.
Um, your overtime, it's all five.
Okay, and then the part-time?
Is that your assistant dispatch?
Yes. So, that's only thirty, that's only twenty-seven, so there will be more expense than to that.
Plus the benefit.
Plus benefits.
Correct. How many people are on night shift right now?
We have two on each squad.
Is it a lack of human resources or a lack of pay that you can't fill these positions? Or what's, what's going on?
Well, no, we, we get them filled. Uh, it's just, I'm, I'm asking for two more additional. Um, once we open them up, we, we tend to get them filled. We actually, another question on the next thing, our newest hire, um, Geneva hired a new officer. He moved back, his wife has sixteen years' experience in dispatch, and she's our newest one. Uh, so, that can be a quick turnaround for us. Uh, she's got a lot of experience. Uh, so the training, all we have to do is teach her our CAD system. We don't have to teach her dispatch. She has all the certifications and stuff already. So, we can get them filled, it's just I'm asking for two new spots.
Dan, are these, are you filling open positions that have, you have a certain number of positions, staff that has been approved through the years, you just don't have them all full? Because if these are, if you're adding staff members, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the commissioners wouldn't need to sign off on any additional staff and these guys would approve the funding.
That is correct. Um, I'm gonna be, I'm kinda putting a.
Okay, so you're gonna.
Clark before the.
Gotcha, okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to verify.
Meeting times, yes, I understand. This is two new spots, which yes, I have to get them to approve the spots. But I'm, and I honestly, if you guys are willing to give me the answer today, great. But if there's more information you want that I need to find out, I will find more out. I said, I, I would like to start this in twenty-four, but it will take an additional appropriation that we'll have to do in January anyways, if you guys approve this. But if there's any other information I can gain for you guys, I'm here to get that information and then I can come back to you and also in January with that information.
And what was it, an hour, eighteen?
We'd be paying eighteen nineteen dollars.
You got a total cost that would be to the county, Dan?
Well, so I'm worried, it'd be about thirty-eight just for the, the salary.
Correct.
And what is, Shane, is it seventy-five percent fully vested roughly for benefits and insurance and?
For this position, based on the changes, it would be an additional roughly twenty-six a year. So, you'd be looking at about sixty-three and a half total.
Okay. Sixty-three and benefits for two, and then you said thirty, thirty-six?
No, sixty.
Thirty-eight.
Oh, for each person?
No.
For both? Sixty. So, for, for two of them, we're looking at a hundred, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-six.
For two additions.
For two, and deducting the twenty-seven thousand.
From the other stuff, yes. And I know the lit P-SAP is gaining money this year. We can't spend in twenty-four, but that'd be another funding opportunity in twenty-five that will continue with, when you guys enacted the, the lit P-SAP. Because that money has to be spent in nine-one-one.
Yeah, but we wanna, I wanna, I don't remember the math, I'm trying to look at it here. Because I, I wanna say it was operating in the negative and the difference just put it back to being neutral.
With the P-SAP?
I, I think, I'm trying, I'm trying to find it here, but I think that's what it did. So, we don't wanna start using it again or it's gonna go negative again, but, but yeah. Trying to find it where we said that.
That's what I'm trying to remember. It does sound familiar though.
I, so I have a note here, I don't, it's nothing official, it's just my own notes, but I have the, we moved around two hundred thousand or so out of the nine-one one over to general just to get it through for this year. And then next year, we're hoping that the P-SAP will start to cover that difference of about a hundred and ninety.
Okay.
Which will put you back to being neutral again.
Then this will put us back down.
That's just, I know, it's one of hundreds of notes I have here, so I'm not entirely sure that's right, but.
Like I said, this, this is not a, a want, this is a need, um, because it is, my, my staff, they're, they're burned out right now after this last year.
No, definitely warranted.
Um, so, if there's anything else I can do, um, let me know what other information you want. Uh, and I can come back, but it's something that, uh, I think we as a group need to find a, a funding source that we can maintain and do this. Because like I said, our surrounding counties, we're, and I didn't even get into Allen County and that because that's, we can't compare to that. I mean, I understand that. Um, I tried taking counties that are similar in our size, uh, and we're, we're behind. We need to get caught up.
I will say I worked in a department like this and when, that was continually operating short. And I ended up working six to eight hundred hours of overtime every year.
And that's not fun. It's fun for a while.
It's alright for a while, yeah.
Then it's not fun anymore.
That's one of the reasons I left that department, honestly. I mean, I'm gonna approve it, but I guess, I get a motion to approve it. Is there some sort of contingency that would?
It would be, your approval would be a contingency that the commissioners would allow the two new positions. That, that's at the minimum.
I'll make a motion to approve a contingent on that, and then it'll be our job to, to figure something out. I mean, it's warranted, it's needed, it's a, like I said, it's a need, not a want.
I will say, I will second that motion.
So, before we vote on it, would it, if this note is correct, which I gotta, we gotta confirm that, but if it's right, one way would be if we really did move two hundred over to general, which I'm trying to remember what that was, but if we did that, you basically just couldn't move it back. This, essentially would be happening. You know, the extra hundred and ninety that you're getting from the new P-SAP would be the thing that pays for this and keeps it neutral again, you know? General would just have to absorb whatever that two hundred was that we moved.
Um, also, two, uh, Bree, our ninety-ten split this year, that come in at just seventy, seventy-nine? Our catch-up from nine-one-one, but we did get the check and I.
Seventy-one thousand, eight ninety-one.
So, seventy-one thousand just came in. It's a little bit more, but.
Okay.
That, that just came in after unbudgeted, that's just, we gotta check in, uh, late October on that. That happens every year, but we never know what that amount's gonna be. Uh, whatever the state has left over there before, they divide it up amongst all P-SAPS and that's what we get.
Well, one thing I think we need to realize too, I mean, every year we need to look at, see how things are allocated and allotted and all that stuff. And so, you know, maybe the P-SAP percentage or whatever changes for the next budget cycle. So, we'll have to just take a look at that, the budget, when we're budgeting next year.
We have a motion to approve the sheriff's request contingent upon commissioners' actions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Now, related to this, the, uh, like I said, the new hire, I would like to treat her like we have treated the deputies that came in with laterals with experience. Um, I would like to start her not at the probationary pay, but the first-year pay with her having sixteen years' experience in a chair. So, I'm asking your permission for that.
Motion to approve, second. What county?
Outside of Indianapolis someplace, I'm not sure where she came from, but.
He's from Madison County.
He was from Madison, okay, so, um, probably Madison County Dispatch Center.
What's the cash balance right now in that account?
Uh, twelve twenty-two.
I think we'd need a one forty-four on that as well, okay.
She doesn't start till the, six, sixteen, thirteen.
So, you'll send the one.
Yes.
So, like, this is the last thing, this year, seventy thousand, five eighty-three.
And that includes what was just the positive, which is about that?
We actually are getting thirty, whatever it is.
Thirty-eight, one thirty-six, I think.
Thirty. Thirty-six, two fifty-four today, there.
So, it'll be right at a hundred thousand.
Okay, but so before that seventy, we were probably down to just about zero, I'm assuming then?
Yeah, I didn't.
Yeah, this count used to be like hundreds of thousands.
And then the biggest hit on that is our radio tower leases.
Yeah.
That's taken a huge hit out of that, of that account.
Yeah.
Because that's reoccurring and we, we know what that cost is gonna be up until, I think, twenty thirty-six with our contract.
Now, that new P-SAP money, does it, did we decide that because this went into effect, I think, in October or something earlier than we thought it would, is that actually starting to deposit now or won't deposit at all?
Which one?
The new.
The new.
Oh.
New point two.
Yeah, so is it gonna be retroactive when it does hit or is it starting? For the twenty-zero four.
It started in October.
There's probably really not much funds available for twenty-four, right?
No.
Probably have to let it build.
I just know we haven't gotten it. So, each month, like, I, each month I get the list, uh, economic development, certified shares, public safety, and property tax relief. They all four come in together and now, I'm assuming that will come in, but those of it hasn't started coming in yet.
Okay, but, but it's not.
We'll have to make it, it's gonna be some fun.
Yeah, okay.
Made a motion, reference to pay starting at the one-year pay. I don't think there was a second or.
Yeah, Fred's second.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
Was it John and Fred?
Yes, yep.
Motion, a second on the table. There's a motion and a second on the table.
Any other, that, that was twenty-one ninety-two that you said?
The, the week, I'm not sure what the pay is, I'll have to do the one forty-four on that in January.
Yeah.
It's just starting at the first year, not the probation.
They started probation pay, since they have experience, he wants to start them at the first-year pay. John and Fred made the motion second.
How long does it take for the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
And then, one month unless you don't wanna do this now, the.
Actually, the ARPA thing is what you're.
Oh, that was this was for?
That was what this was supposed to be for.
Whoops. Okay, now.
So, now you've already used up all your time?
Oh, no, I'm like counting highway.
Hey.
Um, so, the ARPA request, the hardware update for the nine-one-one system, any questions on that? This is, I talked to you last month about it and you advised, uh, to start, uh, an ARPA request for it. This is updating all the hardware and software of the actual, the nine-one-one system when you call in on nine-one-one.
And the commissioners have approved this.
Correct.
Was that about sixty?
It was sixty-eight, two fifty-one, forty-two.
I'm sorry?
Sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-one.
We rounded up to sixty-eight, two fifty-two.
Okay.
The system likes even numbers.
Understood.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Was that Fred and who, correct?
Yes.
I still didn't pull up the, the sheet.
At one time, there was, uh, considerable discussion about cost sharing between individual entities that use the system. Have you ever gone there?
We, we have. Um, the previous administration tried doing it too. When the nine-one-one systems were, or the P-SAPS were combined, we went to a single P-SAP. Um, there was never any MOUs signed, nothing ever, no contracts signed to the other municipalities. And what other municipalities say is they pay county taxes for emergency services already. So, what they don't pay for is the non-emergency stuff that we do. And we've done multiple studies with it, um, how to break it down. But the municipalities and council commissioners have never agreed to any type of payment for it. But again, like I said, they, they pay county taxes for emergency already, and that's what's P-SAP is emergency. But the other dispatches for the barking dog, the unlocks, that type of stuff, they don't pay. Uh, and honestly, the, the number of those type of calls compared to the emergency calls, they're just low. I mean, to set up, uh, a, a schedule to charge them for those type of things, I, first off, I don't know any bails that does that. So, I, I, I really wouldn't know how to go about that. When we've done the studies through, uh, can't remember that gentleman's name who ru, used to run the nine-one-one system. Uh, he's in a private business now that, uh, I know Commissioner Baumann at the time, they hired him to do a, a study of it and it, it really went nowhere because the number of calls just aren't there for the non-emergency calls. And trying to get them to pay more for emergency calls when they say they already paid county taxes for that, it just, it's never went anywhere.
Did we vote on that or just have the motion and second? Last try. Okay, so we just have a motion and second on it?
Correct.
You, real quick, before we vote on, just to make sure I'm understanding this sheet here. So, we have one point, basically, one, one million, one hundred and fifty thousand left of ARPA. No, yeah, one million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand left.
One million, one hundred and fifty thousand, seventy-seven dollars. If this is adopted, we will be left with one million, eighty-one thousand, eight hundred, twenty-five dollars and twenty cents.
Okay, then all the other requests that are on here, plus I know there was another one from the commissioners for over two hundred thousand. If all of those are in, I think we're like nine hundred and sixty over, so we can't approve all of them. So, we're gonna have to pick which ones not to approve. I don't think this is one we not approve. I think this is one we should approve, but I just wanna make sure as we go through these, we're kind of aware that there's more requests here than there is money.
I'd also agree with you, this would be the one to approve. Of course.
Okay, offer vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Is that all my business now? Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Ian here? Ron's here.
Morning. Morning.
I also have multiple things today, so I'm here right now for just ARPA, right?
Do you want me to go through?
Uh, you're on the agenda for both. You're on the agenda for the open the way discussion or settlement and.
I know JB is probably waiting for ARPA as well, so I'll just do my ARPA and then I'll come back.
That's, that's up to.
Circle back around, that's fine, I don't wanna take up too much time of everyone, but, um, so I'm here also for an ARPA request. If you recall, last year, I submitted an ARPA request for rent for Community Corrections Building, uh, for fifty thousand, and you cut that in half, gave us twenty-five thousand last year and said, come back next year. If you're still, if your numbers are still down, so.
It was, it's twenty-five a year and you were asking for two.
Correct, correct. Um, so, we're still down, our numbers are still not at capacity. As of today, we have forty, uh, people on home detention, um, like to see that number in the sixties. It may or may never get back there again. Um, we have currently an unfilled position that we chose not to fill, administrative assistant position. Our staff stepped up and is covering for that position, um, and trying to save money. Uh, looking at our project income budget, do we budget it for twenty twenty-three? We're currently twenty-seven percent unspent at the last two weeks of the year, so we've really cut back spending as much as possible as well. So, um, asking that you would approve, uh, the, the rent for twenty twenty-four. Um, and, uh, our board and myself are continuing to, to look at the cost of community corrections and, and ways that we can stay afloat.
Where are we going from here after all this money is gone?
Well, our lease is through June of twenty twenty-seven, Dennis. And so, we're at a point where you can see the end of that lease. Uh, there is a buyout, if the county found a place for community corrections that wouldn't have to pay rent. Um, an early buyout, or come twenty twenty-seven, we're gonna have to find a new place or continue to pay rent. And that's just, that's where we're at.
Cause I'm one of the, you know, I, I think the numbers are down is a good thing, right? I mean, I, I know you can look at it different ways, but to me, I, I'm not hearing that law enforcement is not out hitting people, right? So to me, that means crime is down. I, I make that correlation. That's a good thing. So to me, it's like, hey, if, if, if you're doing your job well, which you are, the numbers go down. You almost work yourself out of a job. Like, that's, that should be the goal. So I don't want the goal to be more people so that we can fill it in. So this is a good problem in my mind. I know it might feel the opposite to you because you're, you're wanting to build a program, but, um, but it's a good problem, you know, that we have less crime. So that part is encouraging. I know it, it means we gotta adjust. I just wanna throw that out there.
And this is fully funded through grants.
Grants and project income.
I'd rather see them in your place than the sheriff's place. I mean, that'd be, that'd be a more costly for us. I mean, I'd, I'd have no problem approving the rent.
So I don't have necessarily a problem, but I just wanna make sure we're doing the rest of the math here because if we do those four items at the top and the clerk, you're, you're only down to three thousand. This is twenty-five, so if you say yes to this, some, one of the other ones has to go. I mean, to me, I'd rather do this than pickleball, but I, I just, I would swap those.
What sheet are you putting the sheet on?
Yeah.
The one that was sitting here on our desk.
Pickleball, that money's spent.
So we don't have a choice.
Yeah, I mean, you could go and tell them to spend it, but I mean, they could spend it on a budget, but we know they don't, they don't have it. So I have it, if you approve what the commissioners have approved so far, which is the sheriff, prosecutor, corrections, IT thing, and then the overage for pickleball, you'll be at four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five seven. So that's not with the clerk, the AC, or the two burn projects.
I know we were leaning towards doing the clerk, which would be five hundred. That'd get you, that'd be down to three thousand left. So that's why I say, before you approve it, we just gotta make sure what you're, which one you're not gonna approve.
Well, I know commissioners are gonna have another request, right? It's not even on here.
That's not on here. It's, it came up after we did this sheet.
It's actually low, which actually.
The commissioners wanted to discuss.
Which actually lowers the clerk to.
Three hundred, or whatever.
Three hundred or less.
It's, it's more than two hundred, isn't it?
I think it's just two.
Two hundred even, okay.
I don't know if I could speak to the community corrections issue though. You know, I, I've sat on the community corrections board for many years. They're, you know, probably our most direct, uh, connection with what's actually going on there and the decisions we make here. Uh, they, they've primarily been scoring as high as they can possibly score to get all the state grants they can get, so they're funded primarily that way. Not only that, they keep people out of jail, which it's expensive for us to keep people in jail. So they save us a lot of money that way. Uh, plus they do have user funds that come in from the people. But the other thing they do, they're, with the programs they offer, their recidivism rate is like extremely low, eleven, twelve percent. So, you know, it, it's a program that works to, to rehabilitate, uh, the people that are in jail. So it's, uh, any, any support, uh, there you go. Most of that, that program, I think, would benefit.
And we could, you know, squeeze out, still fund the other requested ones, just, you know, minus twenty-five thousand divvied up between.
Clerk is what it'd probably be, cause that's the most.
I mean, everything else would be no.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I mean, the, the pickleball is already spent, so you very much have to do that. Uh,
Sheriff, prosecutor, IT, pickleball, or, or have to.
Uh, the commissioners are gonna bring one up for up to two hundred thousand. The IT, excuse me. To be honest with you, I recalculated Mike's numbers and Mike was wrong. It's actually five forty-nine, not five forty-nine, not five twenty-nine, when you do the math. I should have done the math sooner.
And does that subtract using the money from this year's budget to pay a piece of it?
Yes, that, that is, the, the, the IT, he's already paid the hundred and seventy-four thousand. The reason that all this came up is because he, he got supplies in early. He got them in this year and they weren't paid this year, even though the money was budgeted for next year. And I believe that amount that he budgeted for next year was two hundred and fifty thousand, I believe.
So my question though about all that is, is are we gonna have everything, okay, so the number's five forty, you said. Are we gonna have everything in that pays out the five forty this year or will some of it still be next year?
Some of it would be next year because that's when the bid voices would come in.
When we were communicating back and forth about that whole thing, for me, I just wanted to pay what we had to. Use up this year's budget, pay what we had to out of ARPA this year, and then use next year's budget for the rest of it.
It wouldn't be the rest of it, but it can apply towards it, right?
No, it'd be, it would be the rest of it.
It would be.
It would leave two hundred and fifty thousand in the budget next year.
But he's using that for other stuff.
I have to check that out. You obviously came from the fund out of money and you'd have to see who else had budgeted money.
Yeah, who else has money in that QM fund to pay out of that?
Let's say it was half.
I, I wanna say he had made that number based on like roughly half. Does that sound right? Cause I think. Yeah, cause I think it had two hundred and fifty in it, but he was only planning on spending like half of that.
Yeah, cause it started at like seven twenty-four, which actually would be seven forty.
How much won't be in this year? How much won't be in this year?
I had, I mean, we hit a hundred and seventy-four, right?
Yes.
Which used up the rest of this year budget.
Sitting on a couple invoices, waiting on this meeting today.
Those are a hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Is he supposed to put it through the bond or is he supposed to put it through ARPA or?
Well, I think we've made the decision. We're, we're, we're not bonding anything, but.
Right, but you didn't, we couldn't tell him, yes, paid out of ARPA or not.
Right. And what I'm getting at is paying the rest of, whatever's come, whatever comes in this year, pay it, pay it out of ARPA, but not the whole remainder of it.
The two invoices, Fred, that you would need to pay in December twentieth, which we would need to know today to get that in, is a hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred, three dollars and seventy cents. That's, that's the two invoices that I have right here that he sent me. Hundred and seventy-two, seven oh three seventy. So if you subtract that, if he started with, if.
Three seventy-seven, oh two nine.
And then if you take the two hundred and fifty thousand that he already had budgeted for next year and minus that, what does that leave you with?
One twenty-seven, oh ninety-two.
So the one twenty-seven, oh ninety-two is what would be left if, if you do the ARPA for these. If you pay what he has budgeted for next year, that leaves a hundred and whatever she said left total. Which, if you then bonded that, it would be less interest that you would have to pay.
No, no, you said it started at seven hundred, right?
Started at seven forty-four. He had seven twenty-four, but he was twenty thousand off. It started at seven forty-four.
Okay, so let's make sure I'm following. So seven forty, take off out of his budget for this year. There's nothing left in his budget for this year. Okay, so then next year, he's got two fifty in his budget. Some of it needs to be used for other things. So if we say a hundred and seventy or so, again, then that would take you down to is that how you got the five hundred?
That'd be four hundred.
No, the five, the five forty-nine, it's, it says five twenty-nine, but like I said, I redid the math, it's five forty-nine. That is the starting minus the hundred and seventy-four he already paid.
The five forty pays everything else that's part of the server replacement.
Yeah.
And I don't think we should do that. I think we should pay whatever is in this year. Pay out of, pay, pay out of ARPA.
Hundred and seventy-two.
Some or all, whatever it is, frankly, I.
Next year's budget.
Out of, yeah, use next year's budget and then some of ARPA for next year's budget.
That's, that's how we agreed.
That's what I was.
Yeah, basically, basically you're just using this year's budget, use next year's budget, then ARPA the rest.
But that's not what this says. Right now, this says they wanna approve every, all the rest of it out of ARPA. I don't.
And not using next year's budget.
Not using next year's budget. I don't think we should.
That's the way, that's the way that it came into this ad. You could do that or you could do the ones that are due now. Because Julie Marie can amend the resolution. We can amend the additional because it's under, not over. You can do that. It's up to you, it's up to council on how they want to do it.
I think what you're saying, and I agree, is basically we just need to use this year, next year's budget, reduce this by next year's budget.
Or thereabouts, yes.
However you get there, but that's the result.
Basically today, you want a, um, resolution for ARPA for this project in the amount of one seventy-two, seven oh four, and then you're dealing with the rest of it, next year's budget.
Yes.
Well, let me just make sure. So that would be, next year's budget would cover the rest of it? No?
No.
No.
It would be a hundred and some short.
So we'll still have to come up with, and we're gonna finish funding it.
Thousand.
Hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
But it's gonna be less total than the five twenty-nine come out of there.
But we're just addressing the payments for the bills that are due before the end of this calendar.
Right. That was the whole purpose for having to do what we did is because he didn't have it budgeted, they came in a lot quicker than they expected and they want their payment.
Yeah, so that would give us a twenty-five for two corrections then, too.
If we would drop it to three hundred instead of five twenty-nine, that would, that would pay this invoice, use his budget for next year and, and then it'd cover the one twenty-seven that's still left over that will come in.
That's what I would like to do.
We can do that as well. That drop, and if we do three hundred.
Then you still shouldn't have to do any lease or.
That's for, for, make a motion.
For right now, okay, let's, let's get Ian covered first then, all right. Are we, are we in agreement, we're gonna go there? So we'll make a motion to approve twenty-five thousand. Obviously, that's gonna be it.
Yeah. So.
Fred and Bob, got it. This is for Ian's twenty-five thousand.
I have a motion to approve, which my ARPA request from Ian for community corrections.
Resolution thirty-nine needs to be in your motion, so.
This will be resolution thirty-nine on your approval.
That is a resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Host.
Any of the, well, Ian. I wanna say again, I think for Dan and for Jeremy and for you, I think the fact that you're having this problem speaks volumes to what you guys are doing. You know, the fact that we have less, less people going through the system isn't, we're not a big city where people are just ignoring them. We're dealing with them and we're getting these rights now, so we just wanna give a, a, I guess, a shout out to you guys for, it's a good problem they were having.
Thank you.
I had enough. Jeremy, do you wanna circle ahead of me and get your ARPA done and all?
That's okay. I don't want.
So. So we're gonna wait on IT till after Jeremy.
Yeah, let Jeremy go.
Okay.
Good morning. My ARPA request was a security request, uh, thirty-two thousand, some odd dollars for a bulletproof door for the child support division. Uh, which is a lot, uh, but what it costs apparently. And then three thousand to be paid toward the price of installing monitors in our office so we can access to the cameras. Uh, innovative concepts submitted that quote, or the ones that have been connected with IT as far as installing those already. We didn't pick that, not that I wouldn't, I just, as far as going out and getting bids, I think I contacted Bob Hayes, said this is what we use. He came over and gave us the quote. It's a little worth seven thousand dollars. I can come up with four thousand, some odd dollars, uh, for the balance. I know it's a lot to spend on a door. It's important. Um, if you're not familiar with where the child support division is and the prosecutor's office, I'd encourage you to walk up there. Um, seriously, uh, because they're oftentimes upset with a lot of people in the office because they're getting told to pay child support. Um, they're sitting ducks. Uh, they, they have nowhere to go. Somebody gives a duck with a gun. Um, people can, I don't mean to upset Dan, but people can readily walk into the courthouse today with a gun. That's an issue we have. I know it's a long-term issue, but, uh, the other thing I'd like you to look at as, as we're going forward, we had the fire department come in there. There's a fire outside based on, and then one of those causes could be the elevator. There's nowhere for them to go, nowhere. Um, we've looked at installing something where they, the ladies would be forced to break a window, throw some apparatus out and hope they don't fall in the process while there's smoke coming in is bad. Um, one of the options would be to install a doorway into the courtroom so they at least have another point of exit. So please stay tuned for that. I, they don't like leaving them there, um, knowing that that's the situation. Um, this will all be solved at some point when we are able to have a new, a new cert, a new judicial complex. And I, I know that's down the road. I'm not complaining, but I think we need to take care of these issues now. So that's the basic request. Um, I did wanna get the historical data based on some of the other ARPA requests that, um, have come before you. You can just pencil these down if you want. Total criminal cases filed in twenty nineteen was nine hundred and sixty-nine. Twenty twenty was seven hundred and sixty-six. Twenty twenty-one was six hundred and seventy-six. Twenty-two, twenty-two was six hundred and twenty-two, six twenty-two. And so far this year, we've had five hundred and ninety, or yeah, five hundred and ninety-four. Um, I know Ian's here. We talked about it. I said, I, we don't have the numbers. Um, and I didn't think about it. It's, it's strange, but at one point it dawned on me, what if we're actually doing what we're paid to do?
Right.
You know? You know, we sometimes forget, that might be actu- actually happen. So, uh, my hope is that we just don't go out and artificially increase numbers. I, I, and I, I think everybody working together has caused that, from the police officer who's having initial contact to everybody that has, has some involvement with that offender, so.
I agree, Ian.
So, I don't, I don't think there's any problem there that our law enforcement agencies aren't doing. It's not like we have a drunk driving problem or a burglary problem or a retail theft problem and people saying, why aren't you guys doing anything about it? I think they are. Um, I, I have no evidence to say they're not, so kudos to all of them that are involved. But just thought you'd like that historical data so you can see where we're at.
I'll make a motion to approve this. Second.
Resolution forty.
I have a resolution forty prepared. Uh, if you pass this, it will approve the sum of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred, forty-three dollars for the prosecuting attorney's office to install, uh, security measures for the, uh, Title IVD office.
Ironically, it sounds like four D.
Four D, Title IVD.
And some of it's for the criminal divisions as well.
Corey was the first and I was the second.
Corey and Fred.
Fred and Corey.
Corey motion, Fred second.
All those in favor of, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three forty?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
So then the pickleball, you said you don't have a choice on?
The pickleball, we got to looking at it and added it up. When you talked to Jeremy about it, yes, it went over by that much. So. So yeah, that's already spelled. And I don't think they have the money in their budget to pay it. Do you have a resolution for that made up also, the pickleball additional?
I do.
Heck, well, they have to discuss it first, I guess.
The amount of the overage is nineteen thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and, um, for your information, uh, the county adopted resolution twenty twenty-three nineteen allocating eighty thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars for the project initially.
And I think Jeremy had the understanding, he didn't realize that it had gotten dropped. He thought it was still at the amount that was originally done by council, which I reminded him, well, no, but here we are. It's already spent.
This resolution covers pickleball.
This, this covers the overage.
That's nineteen thousand.
Nineteen, one forty-seven.
This would be resolution.
Forty-one.
Forty-one. All those in favor?
Well, we need a motion and a second.
Tony, how was he able to spin over what was approved?
Because I. Because I do not keep track necessarily of every single invoice when they send a claim in. Because of all the ARPA requests that we've had, we put what they send in as an ARPA request, we put that in, and when we adjusted all of that and looked at it, we realized he was over. I don't keep a running total, we don't have a software to do that.
Oh, we just accidentally paid it?
We didn't accidentally pay it, he sent an invoice in for it.
Jeremy.
Law will tell me if something's in the red, but as far as this, like, it's not gonna tell you that the project is over, because there's nothing to track it besides my spreadsheet. So without going in every still time and adding to the spreadsheet, you're not gonna know.
Well, we keep as good a track as we possibly can, but it's, you know.
Right.
Fred had the motion, John, did you have a second?
I will, yes.
Resolution for.
Forty-one for the additional sum of nineteen thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Yeah, I just, I just hated it.
All those in favor?
Are we, we allowed to vote no on this, or do we have to vote yes, basically, because we already have some tip, yeah, sorry, I mean, we got to have money, we can go pay it. I mean, I just, it's hard, I didn't like to pick up at the beginning, because we have all these really important things and.
We, we can't, this, he still has an outstanding ARPA thing for parking wreck that he has, it's like a hundred and sixty-six. And we can't actually lower that, it's already been approved, but I did tell him, why don't we try to keep that twenty thousand less than what you asked for since you did this? So we, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So he's going to try to watch that and spend less than what it was originally done to make up for that.
Well, how would you do it then if it's already approved for X amount, do we have to?
You don't have to do anything to approve?
No, you don't have to do anything, it just won't be spent, and that would be money that's left in ARPA. You, you can stay under, you just can't go over, so if he has a hundred and sixty-six in there, and he only spends a hundred and forty-six, that's gonna be twenty thousand left in it that you guys can still allot.
And if you see on Bree's spreadsheet, um that actually happened with the HVAC project. They underspent by six thousand five hundred ten dollars and seventy-four cents, so that was added back into the ARPA.
Yeah, so any, anything that's unspent out of something that's been approved, and hope, you know, you'd like to see it all come in under, that money goes back into the pot, and you got, there will be that much, when we do our calculations, you'll have that much left to allocate.
All right, and put me down as a no then.
I was just thinking more of a, beyond a gentleman's agreement to have him not, well, you know, I won't.
Gentleman's agreement is all we can do.
That's it?
We can't lower it.
Can't unappropriate it.
I'll just have to keep reminding him. I mean, I don't, well, Bree, correct me if I'm wrong, is that accurate, because after the first of the year, you have to redo additionals on what's left in those ARPA things, can they lower it?
If they amend, if they amend the resolution.
So they would have to amend the original resolution that was passed for that? Okay, so John, I guess that's one avenue that could be taken.
Yeah, I see that as our primary.
When, like at the January meeting, or whenever, February, I, I know State Board doesn't like to see additional appropriations in January. But at some point, if, if we wanted to amend that, that resolution, Julie Marie can work that up, and we can get that accomplished, and.
Is that gonna basically alleviate Ian's whole problem right there?
So if we lower that, what he still has out there by this amount, or by twenty, or whatever, that'll be back in there.
I would assume you worked towards that.
So instead of the gentleman's agreement, we'll just, uh that's, if that's the direction you guys want to take as a body, Julie Marie can work on that and uh bring that amended resolution back in January.
Do we need to vote on that now, or does it come back?
I, I would, I would vote on that now, so if, if that's what you all as a body want to do, if you vote on it now, he'll know you're gonna have this much less because you went over on the other.
All right, I'll make that motion, keep this thing moving.
Second.
Do a second.
State your motion again.
Bree, did I say all that correctly?
Reduce his ARPA money by this.
Bree, lower the amount. I don't remember what that resolution number was, but the resolution for parking wreck.
I just need to make sure and remind him.
Yeah.
Since that project was passed, he obviously had quotes and stuff for that project, and you know, twenty thousand dollars, just twenty thousand.
Well, and to be honest, all of his were probably the most convoluted of any requests, because that went back and forth between both bodies. And things changed, they wanted quotes, and you guys approved the original amount, then they wanted quotes, they wanted procurement, they approved part of it, they didn't approve the other part, they did. That's how it got so confusing, to be honest with you. So I'll just have to email Jeremy after this meeting and say, they amended that resolution, they're lowering that original uh amount by, you wanted nineteen one forty-seven, right? Okay. So I'll just let him know that, and he may just have to not fix him over or something.
Without department's half figures, that's another one, it's the cash flows, we're gonna have to figure out something on that.
Well, we're gonna do the addition.
We're gonna have to.
It's not the proper number, you're lowering nineteen.
No.
Most flexible.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Yes, so the pickleball resolution forty showing overage. And before we voted no, it was less than a million, so that was come around a bit, sorry, I had to. And then we have a, we have a motion in a second, or do we have?
Use little accounts like.
The other parking wreck ARPA request.
But in general, use whatever you want.
By nineteen thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars covering the overage of the.
It'll still be as much as a budget.
That we just need to vote on.
Yeah, but you don't have to worry about this issue.
And I don't remember what that resolution.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna find it in just a second.
But remember that.
I can look it up, too. Is that what we did last year? Or did we say it's gonna make it one more year?
He won't be too surprised, I've already told him, the social wants to turn back, he's got like five thousand or something.
No.
Or was that a different one?
He's got two, he's got a, he's got a.
Non-reverting and.
He's got the, the tax rate one, and then he's got.
I think it was five, it was like a hundred and sixty. I'm looking here.
Because we had one for a hundred and sixty-six, which is resolution four last year.
Yeah, he had, he had some for parks and stuff, yeah, like I said, he had different, okay, I have twenty-two-three dash four is two twenty-seven, seven ninety. For that one. Two, twenty-two-three dash four, two twenty-seven, seven ninety is that one.
So I'm going to prepare an amended resolution reducing that amount by nineteen one forty-seven for January.
He has spent some of that. Because he als- we also had cover bridge thrown into all that stuff that he did, too. I'll make sure we're doing the right one. Because you did parking wreck vehicles later, yeah, I think.
I think that's the one that we did every.
Yeah, the two twenty-seven, seven ninety was originally what, I think it's like around one sixty-six left in there now, after what he's already sent in, but.
One sixty-six, two thirty-one, that's not including the claims.
That might be in now.
Or, I don't think any of these, I don't think I put the sixth or the twentieth.
So if we amend resolution twenty-two-three dash four to lower.
Should we ask him, like, should we bring him in and they talk to him, like, I was thinking if he had this project and it was two hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
I think there are several little things, but I don't know where he's at on it.
We have to vote on the actual resolution next time anyway, so if he wants to come in for that, it can be there.
Yeah, he can come in next month.
But for now, we'll just pass none.
And if something happens, you can always change it again in January.
Yes.
Nineteen one forty-seven is motion in a second.
Lot of, lot of discussion on that nineteen thousand dollars, but all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
So then on the IT then, you're not. What?
You have paid the one seventy-two, and you want society to keep budgeting, and then cover the one twenty-seven that's left over. That grid, uh ARPA request should be about three hundred thousand instead of five twenty-nine.
And then he's done.
And that should.
Keep in mind, it should have been five forty-nine, because he, his, his, his subtraction was not correct.
Exactly.
It's five forty-nine.
So versus figuring all that out right now, can we just approve the amount for what's left for this year? Would you?
You could use that.
Which is one seventy-two something.
One seventy-two, seven oh four?
I mean, that's, you not wanna do the full amount, I mean.
Because that way we can use some of the, some, there's already money budgeted for it next year.
But he's saying we use that money, use that money, and then this would only be what's left.
One seventy-two.
Right now, we just, we just use ARPA to pay what's due now. It's one seventy-two something.
Yeah, and then next year's budgeted covers an extra hundred and seventy, or whatever it was, which then leaves only a hundred and twenty or so left, so basically.
We allocated that.
Let's just pay, why not pay no? Skip the interest, skip all the bonding questions, be done with it.
Then what about the money left in his budget for next year?
Yeah, that, that gets used.
It gets used.
That's why it's not five hundred.
If he, if he put the two, if he put two hundred and fifty thousand in his budget to cover specifically this, there may be monies for the other stuff, not this.
That's what I wanna know, is, because right now we're figuring a hundred and seventy, it could be the whole two fifty.
I mean, if, if you, well.
Can we call him down, move on, and call him down?
Yeah, we'll see that.
What, what? Question withdrawn?
Well, if you want the commissioners being start on time, probably not.
Well, again, you know, again, we have a hundred and seventy-two and change due right now, so. Why, why, why don't we just approve that?
Because we're gonna keep spending two hours every single meeting going over where to spend all this money, when we already know what we wanna do.
Everything else, everything else, I'm here to know.
We should decide what, like we were saying, we need to decide where to spend the IT, because all he's gonna do is get the rest invoices in January, and then he's gonna email me and Tony again, and say, I need to know where to pay these funds, so if you guys decide now, then it's, like Corey's saying, we're not gonna discuss it again, it's done, it's, this is where we're paying it.
So if we do what you're saying, how much are we using out of next year's budget?
Hundred and seven, hundred and seventy?
Two fifty. We're using the whole two fifty that he said he had. All right, I'm good with that then, yep, let's do that then.
What are you approving? What's the amount you're approving?
Well, we don't have an actual motion yet, but I think they're talking about.
The IT department, based on the five forty-nine number, that he says he needs. Paying the hundred and seventy-two thousand now that he needs for ARPA, if we subtract out the two fifty that he said was in his budget for next year for this project, that leaves a hundred and twenty-seven thousand and change, so the ARPA request gets dropped to like two ninety-nine, seven ninety-six, we round it to three hundred thousand.
Let's approve three, let's approve three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand for the IT ARPA.
Okay.
So three hundred for ARPA, and the rest, I mean, how do you?
Whatever the, wherever it was budgeted from.
So he needs to use that first, I would say.
Use the.
Use his budget first.
Use up the ARPA.
The two invoices he has now in December will pay out of ARPA, what he gets next year come out of Q cap, and then pay the difference.
Yep.
Yep.
Clarion, everybody's mind?
It is actually.
That's what I wanted to do at the beginning.
So that changes the balance.
Have a motion to that effect of spending one seventy-two, seven oh four?
No, three hundred thousand.
Three hundred, change, that's three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Who was the motion second, Corey, or I mean, Kathy and Bob, or Bob and Kathy?
So we approved that, but not at five twenty-nine, at three hundred.
It's the three hundred thousand, so that, yeah.
So if I put that at three hundred thousand, everything right now, you're essentially three sixty-six.
So.
That leaves the commissioners and the clerk.
That's the last, right? That's seven left?
Seven hundred and eight thousand, three sixty-six.
Left, of course, yeah. Okay, so to me, that's basically the commissioners and the clerk. I would put the word out, ARPA's done. This. So do we need to vote on those other ones that we're saying no to then, or they're not actually before us yet?
Yeah, let, let's get to those, um in due course.
We need today, you mean, or you mean do them later?
Later on today.
Okay.
So let's just, you guys wanna just cover them now?
Yeah, let's just do that.
All right, so we already talked about, we've got taking care of the four up here, which is share prosecutor IT and pickleball. We've already said, uh we are taking care of community corrections. And a little over seven hundred thousand left, we've already, we already know we have something coming from the commissioners and the clerk.
Yep.
So that means the Adam Central request and the two burn requests would be a no.
And it's a no because we're out of money, we're not even saying it's a bad project, we're just.
Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
So make a motion to approve setting aside five hundred thousand for the clerk, setting aside two hundred thousand for commissioners, and no to Adam Central, no to burn, and no to burn.
And I'm sorry, no to?
No to Adam Central and both burns.
Both burns.
That will close out all ARPA requests.
Okay. Yep.
According to disapprove, basically.
But not even the big, big knowledge of there.
He's saying yes to clerk, yes to commissioners, no to the other three.
Yep.
So I'll second that.
So this is the clerk's amended, which the commissioners would still have to also approve. And then you're also.
We know at some point there's, and maybe it takes all that, maybe it doesn't, I don't know, but.
And you're also approving up to two hundred thousand for the commissioners' request for the land use.
Which they haven't officially come forward with, but we. Yeah, they'll have to bring it still.
We're earmarking it, so we don't spend it on something else.
But you're setting that aside, and they can bring that up next month, what that one did for next month?
I was sure.
Yeah, if you're ready by then.
We're ready now, if you wanna, you wanna hear it, it won't take very long.
Turn to, to these guys.
Well, you have a motion here.
Well, let's, we, ready to wrap this up?
We have another second.
Yeah, I second it.
Oh, Corey. Okay, so you have a notice.
Okay, everybody understands what we're doing, well.
Setting aside five hundred thousand for clerk, up to two hundred thousand for the commissioner, setting it aside, I assume to wait and see what the actual money is when the, when it comes in, right? And then no to the other three, and no to the rest.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yes, so basically, we've already approved your, wait, but for everybody to hear.
Five, five minutes or less, and we've got a small group that's working, uh trying to figure out a path forward to rewrite and bring up to date our comprehensive use plan, along with probably a more broad vision plan for the county. As y'all may be aware, our current county land use plan is dated nineteen ninety-four, so it's coming about thirty years old. It does guide a lot what our planning commission, their BCA does when they're making land use decisions. We've, we've assembled a small group that's beginning to, to talk to other counties that have gone through a process of not only updating their comprehensive land use plan, but creating more of a vision for the county for the next twenty to thirty years. LaGrange County has recently gone through that, Wabash County has recently gone through that. We heard from LaGrange County a couple of weeks ago, we're gonna hear from Wabash County uh in early January. Basically, it, uh, the, the, um. Basically, it, the, the, the documents or the, the guide that we end up with, we might end up with, would be one that would not only be, include county vision for what we want Adams County to look like in the future, but would also integrate into that. Burn has recently written a plan for the city of Burn, we would want that to be integrated and, and included as a part of that vision. Decatur has been thinking about and wanting to update their vision, so we would, we would maybe work with them on trying to get their vision updated. Geneva, I know, is in the middle of rewriting their comprehensive use plan. What we want to do is, what, what we would like to do is end up with a, a, a plan for Adams County that is more than just the comprehensive use plan, but it's actually a vision for how we see Adams County developing and moving forward over the next twenty to thirty years. What we're finding, what we're hearing, we heard from LaGrange County, I think we're going to hear from Wabash County, is that that process takes, took LaGrange County between eighteen and twenty-four months as they begin to have community meetings and, and surveys and, and there's a fairly lengthy process that they went through, basically gathering information from all of the stakeholders that would be involved in that. We also found out that they spent almost two hundred thousand dollars to get that done. So when we heard that price tag, it's kind of like, it, it, it's a little shocking to think we're going to spend that. I hate to think of spending that, but I also hate to think of moving forward with a land use plan that's thirty years old and that hasn't really updated its vision for where the county is and wants to be going forward. So, and, and I'm also understanding that there's potentially some grant money available. So my thought was, before the ARPA funds were all gone, if we could set aside up to two hundred thousand dollars, hopefully less than that, but up to two hundred thousand dollars for us to, to work out a, 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 a go-forward plan for how we're going to get this countywide vision constructed, assembled, constructed, and presented, approved over the next eighteen months to two years. My, my fear is that if we don't do it out of ARPA funds, it's going to be hard for you all and for us to come to you and say, let's take it out of operating budget. It's not something probably we could spread out, we certainly wouldn't want to bond it. So it's kind of like built for ARPA, built for these funds that are potentially used for more of these aspiration kinds of projects. So that was my hope, is that we could get, get set aside up to two hundred thousand dollars, hopefully less than that, but up to two hundred thousand dollars. The, the group that we've got working on this is a cross-section of commissioners, council, plan commission, representatives from city of Decatur, city of Burn, Geneva. It's a fairly broad cross-section of people, mostly on the planning side, that are working to try and figure out, we're still trying to figure out how we do this. We want to hear how LaGrange did it, we want to hear how Wabash did it. Then we'll probably come to the commissioners as a presentation and say, this is what we would like to do. Obviously, since I'm just asking you to set aside two hundred thousand dollars, it would be my expectation, we would then come back to council and say, here's our plan, here's how we think we're going to spend the money, here's a, an RFP that we've written for, for assistance, here's the proposals we have, and here's the vendor maybe we want to use to help guide us through this. So that would be, this is just kind of earmarking that money. We would come back to you with kind of this whole plan for approval prior to contracting with anybody.
Yeah, it's a, I look at it as an investment. Like you said, it'd be hard to sell out of operating.
Absolutely.
This is a perfect place for it. At the end of this eighteen to twenty-four months, and if it's not all spent, that's going to be past our ARPA expenditure date, how would that?
I, I would assume.
I'd hate to waste the money.
I would assume that we will commit and probably expend the bulk of that prior to getting this final report. So if we end up with, 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 with contracting for somebody of some assistance of some kind, we would probably write that check prior to that.
My guess would be probably close to that expiration date, we're going to say, hey, what are all the projects that are still out there that are unspent? Everybody give us enough.
That's what I'm worried about.
We would spend it though.
We'll do that for everybody.
If you are under contract, if that's how they operate, then you would know the date or the, the amount well before that date and have already paid for it.
Right.
Okay.
I definitely feel like it's important, something I haven't known, but my person I've been saying for a few years where, no, I've heard in the past before people say they don't want to grow and all that stuff, and I don't think anybody wants to grow to Fort Wayne's level. I mean, if we wanted that, you'd live there, but we do need to grow. Take a look at some of the surrounding counties that aren't, or that have lost population, and they, they look rough, honestly. You lose your tax base that way. So, yeah, I think we need to, we need to build our community, you know, you know, steady as, as we go and a little bit at a time, and we can stay a nice, small, viable community for the people want to live in.
Dave, you say two hundred thousand dollars per, what is that going to be spent on? Well, to be quite honest with you, Dennis, we don't know, we know that's what they spent. I assume there are going to be multiple meetings that would take place. We would probably need to, need to coordinate facilities, maybe somebody, a facilitator that would help us, help us construct these ideas and actually write the document for us. The document that I've seen, the LaGrange County ended up with is a hundred pages long. So it's, you know, you end up with a, with, with a vision plan that's fairly extensive, that to be quite honest with you, I know I don't have the time and resources to, to be able to write personally. I don't know that we have anybody inside the county to do that, so I think we're a decent output there.
I've seen those and they give you more information than you'd expect. And then you're like, wow, you know, that's good, you know, to know and, and the step to take to get there, it opens your eyes.
Part of that, if you, for those of you that attended, there's a, there's a housing study that was done recently, and that report was submitted publicly, that housing study would be integrated and be part of this. How does the housing study impact where our vision needs to go? Maybe that housing need, where's it going to come from? Where's the most logical place for it to be constructed? My hope is that also influences then our countywide sewer, sewer plan. We've got, we've got, we have a county sewer system, where do we need to run that to next? Not just to take care of existing problems, but to facilitate whatever part of this plan says, we want to grow, we want to grow here, let's run sewer here, not just because we've got a problem, but because we have an opportunity.
Correctly went wrong, has a, a couple of these counties we've been in touch with seen some success? I mean, some fruits been, or not.
Well, and, and certainly in the housing plan, I know we've got some reports from folks that have, that have begun to execute on that housing plan, that they're, that they're developing housing, they've been able to connect with developers and get housing underway. The, the LaGrange plan, I think, is just recently printed, within the last year or so, Wabash similarly, so I think these plans are fairly recent.
Okay. But of course, also the thing to remember is this stuff doesn't happen overnight. I mean, you don't approve it and then the next day, you know, we're exploding.
Yeah, this is, this is something that's a fairly long-range, long-range project. This is a vision, not a binding instrument, right? Right, right, I, I would, absolutely, and you know, that's, and, and, and the, the county comprehensive plan also is a vision and a guiding document, but not an absolute. So I know we want to come out of this with a county comprehensive plan, comprehensive land use plan. We're required by statute to have a comprehensive land use plan, so we would come out of that with that plan updated. But in addition to that, I would see more of a visionary, here's where we see our growth, here's where we see our industry growing, here's maybe what we would like to pursue in the way of, of industry growth, I could see it influencing our economic development folks. They would like to have a vision like this so that they know who to approach as far as bringing new industry and new, and new jobs or developing that infrastructure that says, this is what we need in order to attract, whether that's housing, whether that's recreational activities, whether that's parks, whether that's walking trails, I don't know what all that is. That's what, that's what this vision would help us formulate.
You have till the end of twenty-six to spend that. Ian has to get to Adam Central by ten fifteen, will you guys have more questions for Steve?
All right, I'm over my five minutes, guys, gals.
It's already been approved anyway, so.
Any other questions? I don't want to cut you off. Thank you.
Hey, Dan, have a, have a deputy watch on the roads going to AC because somebody might be speeding to get there.
All right. Round two.
Wanted to pass this out, I am here on behalf of the Community Corrections, JREC Committee, and the Opioid Settlement Steering Committee to talk to you about spending some of the opioid settlement money that the commissioners approved last week.
Already have.
Thank you. Just to kind of give you a quick recap, over a year ago, I believe we learned that, through the Attorney General's office, that there was a settlement with Purdue Pharma for the misuse of opioids and such. And there was, and the settlement was going to be sent down to the counties. And I, I gave you a breakdown, because it's, it's kind of confusing how it all comes together, but the annual amounts of money that Adams County should see according to the settlement. Now, this is the first settlement, and there may be more down the road, but you can see that, you know, total of, is it almost eight hundred thousand dollars that Adams County is going to receive on this settlement alone. What they didn't do is give us a real good idea how, how to disperse this money. They said this amount can be unrestricted, and this amount is restricted, and the restricted had some pretty strict guidelines as to what it could be used for. The commissioners asked JREC to form a committee and advise or make recommendations to them as to how this money should be spent. So that committee included myself, Kim Hyatt from North Adams, Prosecutor Jeremy Brown, Stephanie Beaver also from Community Corrections, Dr. Scott Smith from the hospital, Megan Jennings from Adams Wells Crisis Center, Judge Conrad, Valdemar Silva also from, from Adams Memorial, Adam Agia, who serves on the Community Corrections Board, Jack Odell from probation, Daniel Reed from the Department of Child Services, Anne Razzo, and also Stan Stop and Higgin. We began meeting this year, and we determined that the best way to do, to disperse this money would be to form a grant similar to what Drug Free Adams County uses for their grants for funding and allow agencies to apply for the money. We decided that the best use for the money for this year would be to spend it towards recovery housing for men and women in Adams County Recovery Support Group meetings and certified recovery coaches. Because we felt like that was the biggest need at this point in time today for Adams County with the funds that we have available. The commissioners determined that of the amount that we've received so far, that they would allow up to seventy-five thousand dollars for twenty twenty-three to be requested in total. The grants were, the grants were sent out, and it was advertised in the newspaper with the Democrat, WZBD, and Burn Witness, who are here at council or commissioners' meetings, as well as Drugs for Adams County, who sent the email out with the grant to all of their partners. We have decided that we would like to, we recommend it to the commissioners, that we would award the seventy-five thousand in full to Crossroads Community with conditions. And that, those conditions are that, that the seventy-five thousand was actually split into two categories equally, so thirty-seven thousand five hundred. For the first category, conditions that are precedent for housing, the, the, the Crossroads must provide commissioners with proof of a purchase agreement and required permitting for use of, for the purpose of a recovery home and/or entry of a lease agreement for residential housing, residential recovery housing in Adams County. They may use that thirty-seven thousand five hundred to help with the purchase of a property, payment of a mortgage or rent, payment of utilities for a home, and/or housing supplies, staffing, and transportation. The other half of that, the other thirty-seven thousand five hundred, the committee determines should be used towards programming. So they must actively be providing programming in Adams County and show proof to the commissioners, which could include recovery support group meetings and/or recovery coaching services. Approved uses would include payment and reimbursement for certification courses for a certified recovery coach, rent or cost to secure office space with meeting rooms for recovery services, office equipment, educational materials, peer recovery scholarships, and, and/or marketing of programming services. I'm not sure if you know what a recovery coach is, but if you don't, think of it this way. I have someone who comes into my department, my agency, who is an addict and is in need of help with services. Well, my staff or I can talk to them all day long about what they need to do, but maybe they don't feel like I see it the way they see it, because I didn't walk in their shoes. A certified, certified recovery coach is somebody who is in recovery, who's been through accreditation to provide coaching or mentoring services to an individual who's in need of recovery. To my knowledge, Renee from Crossroads Community actually just received his certification and is now the only recovery coach, certified recovery coach, operating in Adams County. So I think that having this available, having this money available for this year, I think it's great for our community. I think it's great that the committee said, we're going to require you to prove to us that you're actually doing things and not just say, here you go, but it will be a great help for Crossroads, but it's also a great help to the community. Now, next year, we may come back with totally different categories for what we feel like the funding could be used for. But for this year, that committee, myself included, felt like the recovery housing, recovery coaching, and, and more meetings in our community was what our current biggest need was.
So what mechanisms are, so first of all, are we here to approve it or is it?
So basically, the way I understand it, Fred, is that the commissioners approve the recommendation, you approve the appropriation of the funds.
So what mechanisms are in place to, first of all, ensure that it's being spent how, you know, they say it's being spent? And then, secondly, to show whether it's being effective or not? I know, obviously, you're not going to know on day two whether it's effective, but I mean, we have things in place that we, you know, it's, it's situations like this where you'd say, oh, I mean, honestly, we're seeing something like this in the township right now. You know, they're, I mean, they, they're, they're approving these funds and, and one person was in charge and, you know, I don't know for sure what's going on with it, it's not part of us necessarily, but, I mean, to ensure things like that are happening and it's being spent appropriately and useful, and then that it's also effective.
So I believe the commissioners' expectations, correct me if I'm wrong, so I stand, if you want to go ahead.
Oh, no, that's fine, I was just going to say, when he submitted his application, he submitted a pretty detailed budget for what, how he would operate Crossroads and how he'd spend that money. So we would expect him to come back.
Which is, that was what I was going to say, is that the commissioners are expecting the Crossroads Community Organization to report to them their.
Right, but I mean, that's, this isn't just for Crossroads, this is for any entity that you got, that many chooses to.
What the opioid steering committee did was accept that application through law, and he was the only one that applied. So if, as commissioners, we decide to offer that grant award again, at, at this point, I could see it being very similar to what we did this year. And, and what I did, I asked the opioid steering committee the recommendations, because they're like the front lines dealing. So, so they, that committee brought back the recommendation.
Right, and I understand that, and I'll say, we only have one advocate. For all that I heard about before, it sounds like they maybe didn't get the word out well enough. But still, them bringing a report in is them bringing in their report. So, I mean, really, it's not, again, not just for Crossroads, for any entity that we decide to give money to, what's, I just want to make sure that we're, that there's accountability for that, and, and then, you know.
When, when claims come in for these things.
Try to set, they'll see them. Try, try to set out a way to see if, you know, if it's working. Like you, you do a pretty good job with the report of, set a number, that's how you say it, but, and within Community Corrections. Will we be able to measure that from this as well, is all I'm asking.
Sure, awesome. So one thing. So one thing that comes to mind for me is that, you know, when you think about, what are we supposed to be doing as government? What's our job here? And who does it best? Does private do it better, or do we do it better? I think most of us would say private, not always, but they generally do a little better. So anytime where we can, I'm not going to say outsource, but let somebody who has a private mission that's the same as our mission, let them try. I'm always in favor of that, you know, I, I think they're going to come at it with a more drive, more passion, because they're choosing to do that as opposed to something else. So to me, but, but you're right, though, you run that risk of what happens with it because you don't have direct control. But to me, that's a risk that's worthwhile because I think you get a lot more drive.
And I'm not saying it's not, I just want to, you know, is this $20.23 or $20.24?
Twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
And the committee may decide something totally different next year. Perhaps we funnel some money into the schools to provide some services for, you know, students. You know, we're hearing of kids using opiates, unfortunately, fentanyl in school systems. So, you know, maybe the next year, the view is different. But, you know, at this point this year, that was, that was what the committee decided.
So where, on your breakdown, it says 2022. I know you get a lump sum upfront, and then it's dispersed. Do you, did you already receive that 2022 disbursement?
I didn't, but Bree.
Someone where the 75 comes from.
Yeah, the 2022, my understanding, has already been received. There's still some 2023 money that we've been back, we, as in Tony and Bree and I, have been back and forth.
Attorney General's.
With Attorney General's Office. We're still supposed to get more money for 2023. But the $75,000 that currently is on the table is less than what's currently been received. And, and honestly, you know, you, I think the commissioners made a wise choice in saying, well, we're not going to give all of this money out right now because we can spread it out over the next 30, 37, 2037, and, you know, help supplement where there might be a greater need for a project one year than there is the other year.
Right, that's why it's getting to, this is the first disbursement.
Right, and the reality is, unless something changes, the commissioners change their way they want to do this, we're going to be back here every year until 2037 with these recommendations.
Yeah, as I was looking, even if you didn't stay with Community Corrections or Community Crossings, and you use it all the way to 2037 to help fund that, it still wouldn't be sustainable at the $75,000 a year. If, if they also had a, a long-term plan, I know they're just getting started, and this money is probably going to be a, a huge bonus.
Right.
But I know if they had, you know, plans to self-fund of some.
I, yeah, no, I'm sure they, I would assume that they do.
Yes, I don't want them to depend, if it's not your intention to continue to fund, I hope they've got something to.
Right, I know they've been fundraising for a bit, so I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
$75,000?
Yep.
Motion.
Opioid settlement.
Second to approve the settlement of the opioid funds, about $75,000.
For 2023 disbursement, right?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, when I was in college, I spent one summer working out at the Bush White House, and he started an initiative with the, called the Office of Faith-Based Community Initiatives. And it was really one of the first times the federal government started making a conscious effort to say, hey, some of these faith-based organizations can do as good or better than us, let's use them. And it was sort of taboo before that, but the guy they picked to run it is a guy from Indiana here, his name is Jay Heine. So he and I have maintained relations since then. But stuff like this is a good outcropping from that, and, and it's the right way to go, so I appreciate that. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
County attorney and my report. Can we raise first on the agenda?
Yes. At this, at this point, just some housekeeping matters. I had to make some changes, so it took some time to get it reprinted. Got a couple of resolutions, proposed resolution 2023-38 is for the 911 Emergency Response System Updates for the Sheriff's Office in the amount of $68,0252 that was voted upon. I'm just asking for the adoption of a formal resolution.
We just need the resolution number to be in the minutes on what you guys already voted on.
So you need a motion again, or just sign that?
I, I would, if you want to go ahead and do a motion in a second on resolution, on approving resolution 38, 2023-38, that'll just clean it up, it'll be.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Sorry. John, you're on a second. Or, in favor, Doctor Resolution 2023-38?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's because when the state board comes in and audits, they're going to ask for the resolution number to go with, to go with what we're doing.
I have proposed resolution number 2023-42. That would be pursuant to your vote to engage the services of consulting firm to aid in the development and publication of an updated land use plan for Adams County. That is the project that the commissioners asked for 200, up to $200,000 for. So I would ask for your review and consideration of 2023-42.
You already have a vote made up on that?
Society one you sent?
No, this one is with commissioners.
The one of Steve, the one of Steve we're talking about.
I'll move, yeah, I'll move for that one. Second.
All right, Fred, approved resolution 2023-42 as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, I have proposed resolution number 2023-43. That is for $300,000 for the IT department pursuant to your vote. That would be use of ARPA funds as well.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve resolution 2023-43 as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And the last one I have is 2023-44. This would be for the ARPA funds to acquire and install a digital imaging system for the storage and retention of records set by Adams County Government Departments in the amount of $500,000 that was originally requested by clerk or the clerk's office, later on amended for the benefit of the entire county. So this would be accessible to the county at large.
Motion, second.
What was that number again?
Forty-four.
Motion in a second to approve resolution 2023-44 as presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
We're not going to hit a hazard, don't we?
And that is all I have. If my numbers are correct, it looks like we now, based upon everything that has been voted upon and allocated today, an ARPA unallocated balance of $8,366.77.
Assuming that the commissioners also approved the amended clerk's request.
But I would say it's done, though, right? I know there's $8,000, but someone's going to go over somewhere, so I would.
Well, and you also, the National Association of Counties had a webinar, and they recommended that counties keep some in there, even after I make your request, for attorneys that will have to look at ARPA things that they'll get paid for. So you want to leave a little bit in there to pay, to the ARPA attorneys for that, too. And so we'll probably, we'll see what we have in there, what's left in that line. And that might, might be an additional next year. Let's say there's $20,000 left in it, we might want to, you see what I'm saying? That's what the national is recommending is, to leave some in there for that. Yes, Dan?
Was I, was there an ordinance passed, or am I going to ordinance due next month?
Next month.
Next month.
Okay, thank you.
We're only doing resolutions.
Resolution.
Dan, are you talking about your ARPA request?
Yes.
$68,000?
Yes.
That is resolution 38.
Oh, so that was passed resolution today?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I thought you were talking about one of the things that you worked on the agenda for that you brought up.
I had no computer.
It weren't, pointing the agenda where other matters properly.
No, you've got to do the auditor report. You want to do the auditor report? I have to speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Some of, one of the additionals, I corrected it, or Bree actually corrected and reprinted it to reflect the $300,000 on IT instead of what was on there. But we'll do the additionals first because the transfers could be easy after that. We don't have any salary limit stuff. We have additional appropriations, total 334, 494. Of course, $300,000, that was the ARPA for the clerk. Did you have questions on any of the other things? Corey, I had emailed you on those, if you had questions on them, or. The $75, I believe, Bree, was for jury, a jury meal, if I'm not mistaken. Problem-solving court, $75 additional.
They went to a conference, it's a grant, it's never appropriated.
Okay, so it just needs to appropriate. Any questions on the additionals, or?
Just to make sure, the, there's two of, um, and it says redistributing funds from main grant account, so is that just, it's like a transfer, basically, but it's not? I mean, is that what's happening, or what's going on?
Yeah, reappropriate, yeah.
Yeah.
I would say yes to that.
It's not like new money we didn't plan on, we're just spending it in a different, just changing where you're spending it from.
Yep.
You're talking about the public health stuff?
That one, and then.
Those are both grant money, right?
And then the other one that says preparedness coordinator. They both say redistributing funds from main grant account.
They're all in mine.
Now, the one, though, that says that has a cash, a negative cash balance, so how does that work?
Which one?
The Preparedness Coordinator in Social Security.
See, the.
I wish they had what the department is.
This one.
Read that signature.
Yeah, here it says cash balance is negative.
You have a negative.
Hey, this is all, is that part, Bree, part of the health-first Indiana thing? The, those are like. $21,318. The public health maintenance, 8101, part-time in Social Security.
How many other departments? That's the grant we just got, isn't it?
Just the cash balance says it's negative, so I forgot where I appropriate that. 8101.
So they just spend out of it all year, and then we do an additional to put like in it so that the line item's on, right?
So that'll change once this is added in, right?
So, and it's a reversal, so they spend it, and then they, so it's always in the red, the fund is in the red.
Okay, the fund's in the red, but when it says cash balance, that means like the amount of cash in the bank, right? Not that unbudgeted, so the cash balance says it's negative $5,000.
Because they spend it, and then they send us money.
How do they spend it if they don't have money? Like, I know the budget part of it, but how do they spend?
They have to spend, they have, we have to show that we spend, or the state will send us, that, that fund's always.
Well, the, okay, yeah, the fund's in the red, but you still have to have cash, though, to buy it, don't you?
No, because the fund is in the red.
They reimburse after they spend.
So how, so when you go to buy it, how do, how do they buy it if they don't have money to buy it with? They have to have something.
They do, I mean.
It's like a credit card they paid on?
They're using our cash, they, they're using our bank account.
But the bank account says negative $5,000, that's my question.
The bank account doesn't, because, all right. So the bank account would be like all of our funds added together, together. So like, say there's $30 million, so there's $30 million in our bank account. But like, so on the treasurer's side, they don't know the breakdown of our funds.
For some of them, but not this.
It's coming out of our bank account.
So this is lumped in with something else, like county general or something, it's lumped into?
Yeah. Our office is the only one that like breaks it down or cares about the funds. Treasurer's side, when I send stuff over to them, they just make sure that the bank account is my one.
Which is different for some, right? Like, like Health Department, for example, I would assume they have, they have their own tax accounts, they have their own bank account or not?
Yeah. Everybody thinks we're all in the same bank. And same way with 81, 8113, like, it's a grant, and it's just not budgeted, and it's actually a new grant.
Yeah, it's all the stuff we just approved a month or two ago.
Those are like putting up at the end of the year.
So we need a motion to approve the additionals?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the additionals.
Second.
Got it.
Motion in a second to approve the additional as presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Just for you.
What is, uh, can we have these sheets amended to say what department it's from? Because I couldn't, I don't know, there's no, no way to, for me to know what department it, unless, you know, looking into each account. But at the bottom, it has a signature, but I can't read the signature, so I'd. The additional appropriation.
The request form, it has where it wants the department's head's signature, but nowhere on there.
What department? If you can't read the, the signature, you don't know, you know, without going back and looking at, you know, each fund to see which, where it's coming out of.
If we could just have a department line added to it, then by the signature.
Thank you.
I gotta have a department.
No, it's not, but.
Well, yeah, point being, I, I don't know what the scribble is. Thanks, Bree.
Okay, then we have transfers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Two in a second. Me.
We're on each.
Okay, better, motion in a second on transfers.
Motion in a second to approve the transfers as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else?
That is all that I have. I think I forget it all.
Other matters to be considered?
I would just want to ask the commissioner, just a brief two-minute update. We haven't heard anything for a while on how, going out in Golden Meadows. Just a brief two-minute update, how things are going out there with getting everybody placed and how things proceed.
I don't know that I have a very good update for you. We, we get updates regularly from Brenda Johns, our administrator, out there. But it's, it's just a process, and he tells us with every resident who's been contacted what the possibilities are, kind of where, where they're going. Shannon, can you help me with the numbers? So we're down to 15 residents maybe out there right now?
Yeah, and there's one that by the end of the year, we know is going to be placed. Before he finds a perfect.
So that's, that, and that's, I wish I had a better update for you, but it is a process. It's applications, it's, and, and Brenda does a good job of giving us very detailed news who I have to talk to. We're waiting for two weeks on this report, we're waiting on this, it's a, it's, it's a process. I'm glad we allowed as much time as we did because it's going to take every bit of a year to find appropriate placement for all those residents, I would say. But we're going to be working on it diligently. We're down from, we started out at 21, 20?
22, what I.
22, we started at 22, we're down to 15. And those seven, if I look at placements, they all look like really, really successful placements. So we're really working to do that right. But it's taking us a while, and it's sort of.
Was it three months since?
Yeah, well, it's probably been, we, we made that decision October. September, October, so yeah, we're three to four months, so.
It's moving, it's moving along.
I think it is, and I think, I think the fact that there is activity on all of our residents, I think is, it's just, it's just taking a while.
Thank you, Steve, I just, we had.
Thank you, Steve, I just, we hadn't heard anything for a while.
Thanks for asking.
Just wanted a brief update.
I had a question on council on aging and Stan, I wanted to know how you adopted the fees for the services that you'd mind provide these people?
I didn't care.
How did you establish the fees for the cost of transporting people on the county council services?
Michelle did that.
I'm sorry?
Michelle did that, the director.
They established that themselves.
They cooperated with other counties, I think, to do it and with with the state, if I'm not mistaken, I think she said that when she was in.
And is, the only question I had at the rise is, is there any exception for the people that can't even afford a dollar?
I'm not sure how it can be. She mentioned, she, she said something about that.
I know, as long as she was doing it for the albatross table, if they couldn't pay, they didn't pay. So now they moved going to the fifty-three eleven instead of the fifty-three ten, I'm not sure if those requirements are, I would be surprised if she did not accept riders, couldn't pay, but it's, it's a tough determination on a strictly poor pay system to determine if somebody is truly indigent. Because she she would, additional vehicles and additional dispatcher, she's obviously got additional expenses, so it's, I I don't know, I don't know whether she has provisions for indigent riders.
Thank you. Unless there's any additional information, questions to be brought before us and entertain a motion for dismissal.
A move.
Bob?
Second. Kathy seconded.
Kathy.
Aye.
The other.